Please take the call.
My name is John Span.
Present.
Carrie Griffith.
President.
Ronald Wilson.
Present.
Larry Brand.
Present.
Tim Denham.
Present.
Scott Libby.
Present.
And Andrew Lindsay, all of you except Dan.
Please excuse. Thank you. Okay, for minutes.
Oh, thank you.
We have a motion on this.
I've got a motion, but again, on page two, the second paragraph, I could have sworn that they said they expected it to take three weeks, not two weeks. For the last one. Somehow it stuck in my mind. Did you see it?
I can listen to the tape.
Okay, good.
Change it. Either leave it as it is or correct it, right? Okay.
All right, do we have a second with that question? All right, any discussion?
Is this from the meeting from last week, uh, two weeks ago?
July 13th.
July 13th. All right.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes with that one change.
All right, and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, and then we have two extensions. Thank you. Okay, so are we ready for the Market Basket? Okay, so this is a site plan amendment. I want to pronounce this, go pronounce it wrong, but these supermarkets Inc. has submitted an application for a site plan amendment to remove a portion of the approved sidewalk at 169 thousand Fairwall Road, tax map R05, line 21D-10. If you could identify yourself.
Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Matt Rabasco. Here with Coral Palmer, uh, on behalf of the applicant. Covering the meeting tonight for Doug Reynolds, who was the, uh, project manager for Florida Market Basket.
And I will, if I can. No, and I think we need to make the first motion in order for them to proceed.
Okay, we can't have them introduce anything. We can, why?
Yeah, I just didn't know if we needed procedurally to get the substantive review.
Okay. But I'm, why don't you introduce what you're going to be doing, then we'll take the motion that the plan or concurs with the staff's conclusion that the site plan amendment application materials. So give us a quick overview, please.
Sure. Uh, so I'm here tonight to, uh, present a site plan amendment uh, to the approved Market Basket, uh, supermarket on Thompson Fairwall Road. Uh, this, uh, site plan amendment has been, um, vetted through staff. Um, and what we are proposing is, uh, the elimination of approximately 140 feet of sidewalk, um, along Thompson Fairwall Road.
Thank you. So let's come back to your comment.
Yeah, the language playing board concurs with staff's conclusion that the site plan amendment application materials have been submitted, and the application is complete such that the board may proceed with substantive review of the application and identification of any further information required from the.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have discussion. All right, seeing none, all in favor. All of those, thank you.
No, I just saw that I'm working there. I can't select it. No, you can't.
I'll serve you. Thank you.
That's okay.
Good point.
I just, I just saw that when I saw.
You probably should have stayed, but it.
Yeah.
It, it was, it was more critical when we were doing the last comment, but yeah.
Yeah, I get it.
Isn't it true?
I don't, I don't think we. This isn't related to his job or. All right, okay, you don't need to probably maybe just abstain on that, right? Okay. All right. So. Go ahead.
Uh, so the table of background information. This, uh, project received site plan approval in October of 2022. Uh, the original approval, um, had sidewalk, um, along the whole frontage of the site, uh, as required, uh, per zoning. Following the approval, uh, there were, uh, further discussions with staff about, uh, the elimination of approximately 140 feet of that sidewalk. That the location of that sidewalk was about down here on the bottom of the page, if anyone can see my, my mouse. Um, sidewalk originally extended, uh, from the roundabout here all the way down. Essentially to the edge of the property boundary. Uh, so this, uh, site plan amendment is proposing, um, to eliminate that section of sidewalk and, and therefore pay the in-lug fee, um, for that sidewalk, uh, that amounts to about $3,000. Um, the reasons for the elimination, um, are primarily just because there is no existing sidewalk on that side of Thompson Fairwall Road. Um, there's a, a pretty large ravine, um, at the edge of the property, and there is an existing a pretty large existing retaining wall on that side, and so the the construction of a, of a future extension, uh, of that sidewalk, um, would, would require pretty significant, uh, rework of that existing wall. Um, and so therefore it's, it's highly unlikely, uh, in our opinion, that, uh, sidewalk is likely to get uh, constructed by the town extending from that point. Uh, furthermore, um, what that, what that results in is a, there is an existing sidewalk on the other side of the road. And if we have that kind of long leg of sidewalk there, that's going to encourage pedestrians to cross the road to the other side, once they kind of get to the end of that sidewalk. And because that's what we call mid-block crossing, um, it's actually, uh, it's actually pretty unsafe for pedestrians crossing at that location. Um, it's much safer for them to cross up at the roundabout where cars are naturally slowing down, uh, in preparation of entering the roundabout. Um, so what this change does is essentially just, uh, encourages the pedestrians to cross, uh, at the roundabout, get on the other side of the, of the road where there is the sidewalk, and they can continue down Thompson Fairwall Road, um, that way. Um, so again, uh, because we are eliminating the sidewalk, we would be, um, required to pay the in-lug fee to the town. Again, about $3,000, which was estimated, uh, by Crocker Construction, um, for us. Um, and so with that, uh, I think that, uh, pretty much summed it up, so I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
So we do have two motions related to that. Uh, the first one is in regards to the waiver. Briefly discuss the waiver.
Yeah, so the. I recall correctly at the, uh, beginning of this project, um, there were several waivers uh, granted by the board. Um, and I believe, uh, that the sidewalk waiver was an original, uh, proposal, um, for the elimination of the sidewalk and to pay the in-lug fee. Um, I believe the ultimate decision was, um, for the sidewalk to get constructed, um, which is why, uh, we're, we're here tonight to to ask for that change. Um, so the, I believe it does, and correct me if I'm wrong, the this does require an official waiver, um, to kind of get the sidewalk removed, so. Uh, so yes, we are, we are asking for a waiver of this, this standard.
We have, I just got a question. I, I've been on office work for a long time. Um, yeah, I've got a little learning to do. Why do we have a $3,000, uh, fee for, uh, for this? What's the logic behind that?
It would be the cost to build that portion of sidewalk. So they pay that fee rather than.
Okay.
So that fee could be used for improvements by the town elsewhere where we feel they'd be more impactful.
Anything else?
No.
Any questions from anyone on the board? I guess you said no comments from staff. It basically was reviewed by staff. We have voices.
Review by staff, Tom Eriko, the traffic engineer, you did. He agreed that it's a wise decision to eliminate that portion of the sidewalk.
One question. Um, does that money go into a special fund with the town holds for things like other sidewalks or beautification or whatever, specifics? Doesn't just go into the general fund?
Correct. We have a special fund, um, and we would be looking at potentially using it for connections like car drive.
But. There are some funds, like for the solar arrays when we are doing those. I believe those funds actually go into the conservation pool, right? So. I, I think these end up going into, like she said, improvements for traffic and traffic safety, that transportation, that type of stuff. But I can't specifically tell you where. I just know that that's part of it, sorry. We do with our conditions is typically we'll have some type of, uh, a fee or whatever. I meant those somewhere designated, and then I, I, I have faith that our select board appropriately allocates those funds. So.
The logic behind that is simply that they're saving money, it's going into something for the, the town to be able to use for future. Obviously, 3,000 would not build that. Uh, we all could agree to that, I'm sure. But that's, but that's.
It's always a big calculation works. The other thing is, is that at some point, maybe the town decides that it does need.
So there is a formula that calculates to 3,000? Is that how that works?
3,000 is supposed to be the cost that it would take to build that portion of sidewalk. As determined by the contractor.
Okay.
That was part of the application, which was something from Crocker Construction, indicating that was the cost for building that much sidewalk.
So it's not a, it's not a calculation of some, some formula. It is actually supposed to be the, the actual amount of that. In, in this instance, yeah, yeah.
Right. There, I think, I think they're trying to prove this actual formula, right?
And that's actually.
For the conservation of the solar.
Yes.
That's a clear.
Okay, and then, and I actually made a note because we need to, that's what I was talking to you about for the meeting. But nothing to do with this application, but we need to get our fee figured out for what we did when we approved the project at goodwill, right? Because our ordinance right now doesn't have the coverage very well. So we agreed to a non precedent setting, which very is brought up. How that will be done, we need to now get that formalized. All right. Any other questions? So, thank you for. Would you like to make one? Motion, or sure, we're gonna have Larry make the notions.
I could write it.
You go read it.
Okay, um, I move the requested waiver for 22527G4 is granted and meets two of the, uh, seven criteria listed in the ordinance. Um, there's safe, all alternate passage on the offside of the street is available and top graphic limitations to building a set sidewalk.
We'll have a second. I'll second that. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Okay. One extension.
Thank you. Thank you.
He did this stuff. All right, okay, um, so we have the, the third motion.
Yes. I move the site plan amendment review application of the Market Basket Site Plan Amendment Tax Map R04, line 21D10 meets the applicable standards in the Site Plan Review Ordinance, chapter 175, zoning ordinance, chapter 225. And is approved with staff recommended conditions and findings identifying the staff memo dated July 27th. Twenty twenty three. You said all four, correct.
Correct.
But we're okay with that. Okay. Okay. With all we have. We're reading glasses.
Here. All right, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. All of those, very good. Thank you.
With one of the extension.
I get it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay, we have sketch plan, crafts, self-storage, just submitted a sketch plan, a bit expanded, self-storage facility at 7 Park Road. Tax map R05B, line three, and it's my understanding that we're going to discuss the landscaping for the project from the last approval first. Okay, I have right here. If you would introduce it. If you would introduce it.
Uh, Joe Martin, Sightlines. Um, so the, in the past, I can't remember exactly when it was done, but earlier recently, there was some clearing done along Liston Road, uh, that here kind of the front of the property uh, along the existing development. The owner, Dale Craft, has been working with the town, trying to come up with a landscape plan that, uh, the town comfortable with and that will help out, beautify the property. Also, we've done a couple of different versions. The latest version we sent, um, I think Julie's pulling up. Um, mimics the landscaping that was done on the property directly abutting at the Six River property that was recently constructed. I believe it's a bunch of maples, uh, spaced at interval with underplanning underneath them with some shrubs and, and, uh, a little bit of flowers in there. So the intent is to carry that, um, streetscape kind of across Center Park Road, down the Liston Road, and on the front of the property, so. Um, and with that, um, Mr. Craft wanted to, uh, kind of say his piece on it too, so.
Sure. You wanted to take the mic?
Yeah. Where are you?
That's fine.
Just, oh, I'm a little short, so I'm staying with work, good. Well, it's kind of unusual that I put myself in this type of position anyways, and you know, I, uh, Dale Craft from Lisbon Falls, and over the years, I've started many businesses and hired hundreds and hundreds of people and hundreds of contractors and, and, uh, and done many subdivisions, and some of them I did them myself, which I'd never do that again. That's why I hire these guys, because it's getting a little, it's, it's way too stressful, but anyways. Uh, the decision I made to cut there wasn't an easy decision. Um, back in 2005, when I bought the property, there was a 85-foot, uh, setback and zoned differently. I think the zoning has changed three times since I've been there. And then it went to a 35-foot setback, and then my son, John, I was decided that I wanted to, uh, get him in the car business, because we broke in the car business and figured I'd stop my son, John, and get him into business, so came before you guys and got approval for the auto sales. Um, tried to get the trees cleared and put in a landscaping plan. And I was told that it was a no-cot area. Uh, I went, I went to, um, Pine Knolls, uh, landscaping in Lisbon and had a beautiful plan put together, but never had a chance to really present it. So we moved on. I wanted to get approval, because I wanted to get him working and get, get the business moving, so we did that. So that's kind of the history there. Uh, so, yeah, I got a few pitches I wanted to show you guys, um, because we had that micro storm that hit in 2021. Uh, but did significant damage to my property. And I have some pitches here that I'd like to pass around if I could.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. So that property, that, that I call little forest I have there was never really a very good-looking forest. You know, old big pine trees, lot of old branches, different growth. I mean, nothing beautiful to look at, I can tell you that. And because being in the car business, I wanted a good display. And one of the arguments was, we don't want people pulling side the road, driving, walking, getting going down through the gully and coming up. And so I put up a cedar split fence, um, most of the way. Uh, so I do plan on extending that, if that's okay with the board. Um, so when that microverse hit, you look at them pitches and you'll see that there was some trees headed towards my buildings. Thankfully, they went at an angle and missed my buildings, but they took out my light pole, which I spent about $25,000 putting in LED lights out there. And it took out one of the LED lights, bent the pole, uh, cost me around, well, the damage was around $8,000, so I got it cleaned up and had the pole replaced. My concern has always been that my lights, all them trees are right behind all my light poles, which was a, was a liability anyways. So when my insurance got approved again this year, they didn't make an issue about that, but I noticed with the insurance companies that they are getting really tough on properties. I mean, the cost of properties for replacement is so high, so I had a big, long list of just little things I had to do. I recently had a friend that said he had a 25% increase in his insurance. Another business that's been in business for 40 years was completely canceled, and it goes on and on. And so I am looking at these buildings that, which are full of customers. And if you look at one of them pitches, you'll see a very large pine tree on a, on a bank and there's set, a pine tree like this, it sits right on the bank and it's probably 120 feet tall. Like, my pocket there is only 60 feet wide. Uh, when I had the wood, the wood logging guy come over to take a look at it, he says, you know, them big pine trees, that big one right there, the way that bank is, that's going to end up on probably one of your buildings. And so through all that happening, I watched the tractor equipment place down the road clear right to the road. As I found out, this is zoned differently, but still, it's a couple hundred yards, 300 yards probably down from my property, and it cleared every tree. I go, huh. You know, then the other project, right on Center Park Road, they did the same thing. They had a forest there too. And they cleaned every tree right to the road. And I'm going, huh, I thought this was a no-cot zone. So that, I said, well, I guess it's no longer a no-cot zone, because they, the town has obviously allowed them to cut right to the road. And so when I got thinking about the liability of them trees, my buildings, I said, well, I need to protect my investment. So mistake. I should have came to you guys and had the same spiel and got permission to cut the trees. I understand that. And I've been in business a long time. I've never pulled that ever in my life, but I did. I cut the trees, and here we are. Now, I understand that I'm at your mercy of what I have to put back there. I understand that. I just hope that, um, the standard for me to landscape would be the same as my neighbor that got, that got to cut right to the road, and my other neighbor, they got right to cut to the road. And also that, you know, the addition that I would do with my landscaping is I would have that seat of fence run all the way down my property to the end of the parking lot. So I just, uh, hope that you would approve the proposal that Joe has presented, so that we can move on, beautify the property, and, uh, make it look better for the town and for my own property. So that's my spiel. So I'm at your mercy. Thank you.
Thank you. So.
Any questions?
I don't, I, it's not for you, sir.
Okay.
Not right now. So I guess maybe Julie, maybe Paul. Um, can you talk to us a little bit? My understanding is what was passed out to the board is committed last week. And, uh, and you were looking for something more here, so I guess it hasn't passed staff review. And I guess I'd like to have things been put for the board, so that we have everybody's input.
So the plan that was submitted, um, Joe from Sightlines helped Dale design something that was similar to what was included in the first, uh, at Six Center Park. It doesn't meet the ordinance the way, um, that it, that it's proposed. Uh, there's supposed to be evergreen trees, there, tinted trees, multi-scented mumps. Doesn't have the amount of plantings that it should have in order.
Okay, since Six Center Park was brought up, we know that they submitted a landscaping plan as well.
Yes. So Six Center Park was approved, um, with similar landscaping to what is shown here. We did some research and really couldn't find much about it. Um, it was noted in the memo that the landscaping met the intent of the ordinance.
In the staff memo?
In the staff memo. Yeah.
So. Um, do you have anything? That, that pretty much sums it up. Nothing more to add. Okay, do you have something to add?
Sure, I can add. So, uh, one of the, the arguments we've had um, with the landscaping requirements, the ordinance in the past, is, um, you know, a lot of times we'll go to landscape architects, have them do a plan for us. When they look at the landscaping requirements, it's a lot of planters. And the number of plantings, you're almost replanting a a wooded area, and it's making it difficult for those, um, planting support. Uh, I think Dale's, uh, Mr. Craft is okay with adding some additional evergreens, but I, I want to say if we were to meet the, the ordinance requirements, I won't say it's another 15 or 20 trees from what you see there. Uh, so it's going to be a really dense planting, um, that's, I, I don't think it's going to be the intent of what you'd want for that streetscape. But there, I think there are some things we can do there to, to add some additional vegetation to, you know, somewhere halfway.
Okay. So I guess the questions and comments, uh, and I'll just say I very much like things to come through staff, through staff, like when it comes to board, and we use the staff to give us those recommendations as well as the peer reviewers and so forth. So you do have us in a little bit of a different position tonight, this. So what are the, I guess, questions we've done?
What that I have, uh, Chairman, is, um, I understand that this is an after the fact, and we're dealing with, um, something that's in violation because it wasn't permitted, but what, um, how did we go through? I obviously wasn't here. Uh, how, how did we approve the butter with something different than, it's all clear out there, than what we're trying to say that is necessary for this one action, but trying to understand that.
That's a good question, and the only what I can understand without pulling back and looking at everything, right? Would be that it did have staff recommendation that satisfied the intent of the plan. Um, and we, we are all just volunteers, so we take our input from staff and we take our input from peer reviewers. And I said it was right. None of them are perfect, but I think I would say that's probably what happened. Yeah. Didn't know, Scott, you have a, a better answer for that?
Uh, no, I mean, I, with the other across the street location, my, my feeling on that one is that we, at least I dropped the ball between stages, because early in that process, they were leaving a lot of those trees. It wasn't going to be cut down. And then our focus moved to more of the building development as far as the, the multiple lay, levels and how they, how the architectural potential. And by the time we got back to the final review, um, I, I meant, I didn't notice that the landscape plan had changed um, to be this, similar to this, then fully leaving the trees. I mean, it did leave the trees by the, we're being a back, not as far back as I thought they were going to be.
Well, not the ones on the road.
But not the ones.
And not for this, but, excuse, but I will say, when I say staff, Julie wasn't here. It was a different staff at that time.
Yeah, well, it's, I mean, I, I sold the three houses, uh, the three properties are right across the street from it. And you have to look at this big wall of building now, and I think what we're trying to do here is not going to look like that. It's probably going to look a little bit less industrial. I, I just don't see the reason why we have to make something more complicated here than we do on the property right next door that was approved.
No, no, I get that.
Yeah.
It's, I, I was on, I was on the board and combined with that, and, and uh, and I agree with what Scott just said. I can say, of course, I, I go by there every day, pretty much. And I was shocked when, oh.
And I was shocked when, oh, where, where did all the trees go that I thought were on the plan? Uh, so that was, to me, that was almost a similar situation that we had thought that the, the trees that were right along the road were going to be staying there. And then all of a sudden it's cleared all the way to the tournament. Uh, so uh, but I know also quite often we use a landscape, you know, landscape plan architect to review our plans. As far as, and I understand what you're saying too, is that we run into that where you know, you put everything, your plan was required by the ordinance and everything's gonna die in about six years because they just freeze grow.
So I guess another question, um, are we satisfied the other side? And I, I think you're right, it looks like more, are we satisfied that the other side is the way we thought it was going to be? And that, that's not a good question. Are we satisfied with the way the other side turned out?
Uh, I don't check the planting details. I don't have no background in that at all. If it's not a pine tree, I couldn't stand, definitely tell you what it is. Uh, I assume because we haven't had any complaints, it's probably okay. Other than that, I don't. So assuming it is okay.
Larry, you, you said you drive by there all the time. You're
There, there are, there are some small trees there right now.
Yeah.
You still, you still notice the buildings.
I haven't um really picked it apart, but I've seen the landscape plan for that property and I've seen what's planted and I, it looks like they planted what was required.
Reasonably looks like what was required. So with that, like the planting, we always hear there's, there's too much. I, I almost wonder if that's set that way so the board can, you know.
Soften it a little bit?
Well, not soften it, just, just tailor it to each site that's needed.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, we kind of just did on the, on the four units, right, down there by Goodwill, right? And we tailored that to the site because of the slope going up and what was there for what the landscape plan should have.
All right, so we are in uncharted waters, having four more to go.
Well, I also want to ask a question about the fence, because you mentioned the fence and then I, where would the, is, would this be in front of or behind these trees?
When you turn into Center Park Road, I have a seat of fence all the way down to my entrance. And then on one ninety-six, I have, I have a seat of, uh, seat of fence, about three quarters of the way down. And my plan is to run it all the way down.
So this would go across where the trees were cut?
Yes, it's already, it's already about three quarters of the way.
In front of new plantings or behind them?
It would be, it's right on the edge of the bank and on the gully of one ninety-six.
So it'd be, it'd be in front of the.
In front of the trees.
Yes, be in front, which is, which is more landscaping than I have next door.
Right, I mean, I, I, I kind of like that idea, so I think that'll help the situation to have that consistency with the fence on both sides and having that finished would be a great addition. I mean, my, my, I guess my thought is that, you know, we need to have some kind of consistency with this and then with what's across the street and I think, I think we could have a little bit of a compromise possibly.
My, my concern is, I, I think we made a mistake on the one across the street. I don't think making a mistake again to um validate that.
All right.
And if we could have some landscaping that, because I think in both instances, we would have asked for more landscaping given the buildings behind it, that we would want for the post across the street, have more landscaping in front of that large building, more landscaping in front of the storage units. Um, I, I don't think that we would reduce, I mean, I wouldn't, I don't know about anyone else, but I would not be looking to reduce our standard for landscaping in those instances. I, I, I think we made a mistake on the other one, and I, I think that on this one, you know, I know, you're sorry about cutting those trees down, but um, those were not all huge white pines or other trees there. And there was a mechanism become here. And I think at this point, that, you know, best step forward is to try and meet the, the ordinance and, and the landscaping within the ordinance. With, you know, we can I, I think a minimal I think a minimal amount of landscaping is not the target, maybe um larger caliber trees, um, you know, a more robust landscaping plan.
Um, yeah, well, it's the trees, my trees at six center park are small caliber trees. I mean, I know they'll grow, but maybe not, maybe not my way.
Does the other side have a fence?
No.
Six hundred.
I doubt that.
Yeah. Now, we did, I'm reading this right, it looks like there's more room between uh the roadside and the first row of buildings than there is currently on six hundred.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're pretty close. Six hundred park is very close to one, you said, you can use set back with somebody. I mean, is, is the plan, if I may ask Mr. Kraft, uh, is the plan to continue to utilize that distance between the plantings and the first row of buildings?
I don't have any plans. I'm, I'm not going into con in this, but I, I have no plans to do anything with that at this point. My, my, my long-term plan is my daughter, my oldest daughter, who's now the general manager, I'm getting older. I am part of the reason I'm doing the expansion is making it so that I can grow this a little bit more so that I continue to make a living as I retire and they take it over. So I don't, I don't want to be in any more business. I've been running forty years in this wheelchair doing businesses and I'm ready to slow down. And so I'm trying to turn it over to her. Uh, I don't know what their plans would be in the future, but we have zero plans for that front at this point. But it is beautifully lighted, it's a nice pocket area, would be nice if it was paved. I think it, it could unify it a lot with, with landscape. I would like to have some visibility there in case sometime she does display something there, but like I said, there's, there's no plans at this point, but it was approved, it's there, it's lighted, and there could be a day that they might want to do something.
So, so I guess, I think like, I struggle with two wrongs making a right, right? I know it's a cliche, but um, I guess I might have you and maybe if you don't think it's you, maybe we should get a landscape architect to at least give us some input on the one across the street and see what they think, right? And then I, then I'd ask you, is there something we can go to improve the landscaping over there? Right, um. And then I guess I would, you maybe get together with Mr. Kraft, if there's something more we can do here and satisfy staff.
Yeah, and I, and I'll just, you know, just kind of a, a general theme of the board of um, whether meeting the exact language of the ordinance is necessary or if there's some flexibility there to, because I think the, the kind of differences, do you want to complement the, the development and buildings or you want to screen it? Uh, if you want to screen it completely, I think probably following the exact language of the body ordinance probably accomplish that, but along that stretch, it would make more sense to me to more compliment it and, and I think, like you said, take this plan, maybe modify and add some additional trees.
Yeah, if it was just me, I'd probably lean towards compliment as well, but I'm just speaking for myself of the ordinance.
No, I mean, I think something between this and what the word it says in, in you accept.
And I don't know that we have any options across the street, but I would like to address that if you would. See if we did.
Street, well, that's the party minimum. Probably not.
Right, I still would like.
Um, so is the intent of the town to make those properties, kind of play off this question, so that they're not visible from one ninety-six, um, like the tractor, I mean, you can see it, it's like a retail lot, it's all there, you can see it visibly.
I don't, I don't, then I can't speak the policy and I guess no one's can, but that's why I made the comment. I think that would be more towards compliment rather than screening.
Just trying to understand that.
It's the same intent you're talking, which would be that.
Is it supposed to be more like as you turn off that one ninety-six, it's, it's more of a, a visible retail lot then, but you don't see it as you run down one ninety-six? Is that what the?
I don't think it's good, and I think it is more compliment, but that's just me.
But I think it's questionable as well, like I don't have the, the ordinance. You gotta see one that like, when he did, when we did uh up behind Cantrell's, there's this self-storage facility that we approved um months ago and that language had more of a screening.
It was screening.
There were like, well, it's three hundred feet back, you know, you're not gonna see anything.
Structured itself.
Yeah, so like, so we reduced, because it's behind, it was a back lot. And so we reduced the landscaping because it, it didn't need a screen back.
Yeah.
So, but that, that's a different zone.
You can get into the same discussion and argument that John Larson at Austin Fair Mall, he liked to clear the tree and there's debate about trees being stayed there between him and the interstate, so, uh, and I don't think we're gonna solve that tonight, but um.
Trying to learn too.
No, I, I, yeah.
I think, I think tractor supply, not tractor supply, the tractor place.
Uh, actually maintain some of the larger trees on, at the front of that lot. I mean, I know, I know, I remember we acquired some plantings along the, the side residential uh part of it, but I mean, in order to bucker to the residence that's right beside the tractor place.
Right.
Again, I'm trying to learn, but feel a little bit just for a moment longer. The uh, the, if the tractor place had approached Mr. Kraft and said, I wanted to there are all these buildings, I want to put our place here, would we be okay having it like retail facing one ninety-six or is it something that it needs to be, the frontage needs to be visibly and retail visibly on that side or whatever the words call, um, the turn on.
Center park.
So, so. Um, is, I'm just trying to understand, is there something opposed to making one ninety-six the retail front? Because, or we're trying to make it like uh a forest or something?
I think, thanks Scott, we need to look at the specific, go back for that, that location.
I think for, for that property, I don't think you'd get a curb cut on one ninety-six.
Okay.
Um, I figure it has to be center park because it's part of a, a development, this is part of development.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a call?
Please.
I drove from Lisbon line all the way down through and you really don't find any other business along one ninety-six, and I can see it has a forest in front of the business on one ninety-six. You know what I'm saying? You know, you just be driving down to it, everybody's business is open and visible.
Well, that's what I'm trying to understand, is, is the business on one ninety-six or is the business on center? If it's on center, I, I can understand why we need to pace center, but and not have a visible on one ninety-six. Just trying to understand that. Not trying to do.
No, I understand, but I don't know if I have a good answer to that without looking at the zoning and the plan and so forth, right? But I don't disagree with you, right? But in your case, as you stated, when everything got cleared, it just sort of stood out, right? And that's basically kind of why we're here, it's fine. But I do agree with you, if, if it were just me, I think there needs to be balance and I would lean towards making it sort of complement the structure and making it look good, but you don't want to hide the business because that's why you're in business, right? People need to be able to see that business, right? So that's a general thought on my part. I still would want to, again, um, look at the project, look at that project and, and see what, what requirements are. And yes, we rely a lot on the initial, we get from staff and we, we get the um, uh, peer reviewers.
And, and does the fence have any bearing here? I know it's not planned.
I actually think the fence helps.
Yes, I do too. And so I think we need to remember that
Right.
this is in his plan to be able to do this. I think it's a good thing. And, you know, so you've got a fence going in here, we can't really see here, we've got all this stuff that you guys.
I actually think the fence helps.
Yes.
It's that point.
Maybe if you were, you know, I don't know, whatever.
Gets us towards that and if they can kind of work together, which they have to come up with something, I think if there's a, a solution, I do think we need to at least hope the other side and see if we have any recourse.
I just have a question on, on the process. Obviously, it's not getting approved tonight with the landscape plan. So um, as I understand, to come forward with the, assuming we get the sketch plan approval tonight, to come forward final, we need to have the landscape plan resolved, um, or the, the plant replanting of the area.
Area, I'll say it slightly differently. The sketch plan doesn't get approved tonight. We do sketch. We try to give you our input on the sketch. You give us your input, try to make sure we've answered your questions and what our expectations are, then you bring the project forward.
Okay.
Uh, my take would be that you ought to be able to bring the project forward and bring this pretty much at the same time.
Yeah, that was my question.
I think if staff's satisfied with.
And if we also make up here and the landscape plan wasn't approved, then we'll be able to move the other one forward. That's not, yeah, yes, sir.
One more. Soul grown down there, because I look terrible, but as I called, Tom came, he said, leave it alone till, till the board tells you, what, you know, how are we gonna move forward? And I guess my question is, can I, can I clean it up? I mean, it just soul grown, the grass, stumps, brush.
Does anybody disagree?
I just like to make it look better.
I'd say, I'd say go ahead.
I'll do the plan, but I'd like to get that excavator out of there.
Let's get it back away.
I'd say go ahead and clean it up, but on a journey reason?
Sounds good.
I appreciate that.
Unless anybody in the board.
It's almost like a, if abandoned property.
Uh, if you clean it up, it'll actually make everything look better.
Yeah, so yes. Well, thank you.
That's a good idea.
Thank you.
All right.
So why don't we move into your sketch?
Sure.
And what I would suggest is along with that, when you bring it back, bring this back with it and you do it all at the same time. That, that does work, right?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Actually, I don't know if it's really a conflict or not, but I'll disclose that I do rent a unit in the craft cell store.
Thank you.
But I could ask if he pays, but that's.
The good part is, I don't know who pays, I have somebody does that.
I, I don't think he has the excuses any of us here.
Right, you're, you're good, thank you.
Okay. All right, I think she recognizes my voice.
Oh, I bet she does.
All right, so uh, Stone Marne, the set land here again, so um, this is for the, the craft cell store site around Center Park, uh, Center Park Road. Uh, so in two thousand and three, uh, the original uh project was approved, consisted of a number of self-storage buildings um that was constructed. Um, uh, two years later, there was uh an amendment to add the gravel area kind of between the self-storage buildings and Lewiston Road, which was I think briefly used for um, for car sales. Um, so at this point, uh, what they're looking to do is kind of develop the rear of the site, so there are some wetlands which um kind of cross the site. And they want to extend uh an access drive uh from the existing self-storage unit, units over across the wetland to the upland and then develop an additional four storage buildings with the access drives and then reconnect a secondary entrance on the Center Park Road. Um, there is an existing DP permit uh for this property, so that will need, need to be amended as part of this, which can be reviewed uh through the town's uh delegate review authority. And then uh there also need to be a, an amended wetland permit because there will be some wetland bill required as part of this expansion. That will be, need to be administered through DP. Um, we're still looking at um kind of what we need to do for, for Stone Marne management. Uh, most likely the way these self-storage units typically work is you kind of have a uh the paved area in between the buildings, it's kind of bead. It all flows from one side to the other and then we'll have some type of stone mark base at the end that collects it, treats it, and then just start as a offsite. They, these units are not gonna have any water and sewer. Um, there is a, a septic and a, and well in sight, but those are used for a small um office buildings there, or portion of self-storage office. Um, so all that'll need to be extended for this is um electric to serve the units. Uh, that, I, I guess you can, you know, answer your questions.
Any type of a lighting plan or anything?
There will be a lighting plan, there'll be um, um building mounted lights on the buildings. Of course, these buildings aren't very tall, so the lights kind of just shine light right downward towards the units, but we'll have lighting patches. And it will be, I saw there were some security cameras on existing units. That was the question actually to staff review. I assume there will be some security cameras on this, so, um, that was one comment from the police department, they would prefer if there were security cameras.
So right now there are uh two. So right now there are uh two entrances going to Center Park Road. Is this now going to be agreed?
Yep.
And entrances?
Yes.
And on the. The. Currents who um at times are are gated. Uh but sometimes. Much not, yeah, I think maybe the gates aren't working. Uh but so are all three going to be gated entrances?
Uh the the new one can be gated, I think the other two, this one are, I'm not sure about that.
Yeah, well, yeah, the one common on the gate, uh a kind of software program, uh with a company that. Whatever is a built place when I'm in business, somebody took it over, they just notified me that. That they no longer can help me. So I'm actually going to a self-storage convention in September. To meet with a bunch of vendors to find out which program I want to put in and then decide on. Who'll go with for that exit gate. So actually, there's one entrance gate and exit gates. So you can either exit the first one now, or you can go over there, do your thing, exit the, at the end of Center Park Road with a gate.
So.
I think the police department is concerned about some some security.
Yeah, and and the fire department will have uh access to those gates if they're.
They do, they'll have a key to get in.
Yeah, yeah. So you you said you saw staff review comments, you saw the pure engineering asked for the DP.
Yep, and we'll provide that. There, we have the DP permit, we went up to the um archive room and viewed their files so we can send that on to them.
And yeah, the police chief just talked about, he thought cameras was a good idea.
Yes.
Um, any comments or questions?
Pretty good.
Okay, so. If there's any other business, I'll take a motion to adjourn to workshop. Don't move. Second, any distinction? In uh all favor of.